All right, good morning. It's good to see so many smiling faces here today. It's gonna be a great board session. Thank you for being here. We are here for our Marion County Board of Commissioners Weekly Meeting. It's Wednesday, October 10th, 2018. And we are in the Senator Hearing Room. And if you would join us, as always, we like to start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounds so good, hearing your youthful voices saying the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. Thanks for joining us. Our first item on the agenda is for public comment. We have two people signed up for public comment today. Latricia Straw, if you'd like to come forward and... To the microphones there. Good morning, Latricia.
Good morning.
Good to see you this morning.
Good morning. My name is Trish Straw. I'm the president of Marion County's Public Employees Association. I sat in about 20 interviews with HR concerning Jamie Nasmit's case of sexual harassment and discrimination. It became apparent at that time, this was not a one-time issue. It's a cultural issue affecting multiple employees. I urge you to do the right thing, investigate these allegations, and take the appropriate actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. It looks like Mercedes Luley?
That's me, I'm back.
Welcome back, Mercedes.
Thank you, I'm just seeing you guys.
I was hoping that I didn't have to come back, but sometimes I just can't help myself.
You're welcome back anytime.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I want to let you all know that Jamie wishes she was here right now. She had to go to work. She's paving today. And she did send me a text before work letting me know that she had a couple things she'd like me to share. And here she says, "I want you to tell them, I'm not gonna stop fighting for my rights to a safe workplace. I want this to be my home again. I will not be quiet about the acts of discrimination here at all of Marion County. Not just in my case, but others that are battling this attack against them. I'm not standing alone." As we can see, she says, "Look around." She knew she was gonna have some support here. We will not be silent anymore. She says she will not be bought off, and she will not be quiet. She has integrity and compassion for her fellow coworkers. She wishes she was here to show each of you that she's not afraid to keep standing up. And she's going to keep standing up, and I'm gonna keep standing up with her. I have a journal here. I write my thoughts, I write my intentions. In the front of it says, "Go into the world and do well, but more importantly, go into the world and do good." So it's been a week. We haven't heard anything from you on what's happening. It's our understanding that Marion County does not comment on personnel issues. But we haven't seen any action taken either. So actions speak louder than words. We'd like to see some action in this case. Jamie's being forced every day to go to work. And work with people who are giving her a wide berth. They're a little uncomfortable. The whole dynamic has changed for her. She knows that John Newell... Are Don Newells back at work? Now they're trying to put buffers in place to keep things from being uncomfortable for everyone, but it's uncomfortable. Jamie's now in a position where if she applies for a supervisor position in the future, Don gets a say. And you can tell me, please, if you can, tell me how that is fair and just. We just did the Pledge of Allegiance, liberty and justice for all. I'm not seeing that. It's time to make some changes. It's election season. I understand both of you are running for office. We need to see some action. It's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. And as I said, you're welcome anytime. And I will reiterate that we cannot comment on personnel issues. And there are things happening that we can't talk about right now. So appreciate your patience. All right. Well, we're gonna go right into our business today. And Commissioner, I think it's your turn on the consent agenda. Commissioner Carlson is out of town, I believe.
Hi. Chair Cameron and I have made a motion. We approve the consent calendar this morning on it. Under Board of Commissioners, All CC Application with Recommended Approval. Nancy's Burgers and Fries in Salem. Approve an order revising Administrative Policy 206, Reduced Operations or Temporary Closure of County Offices. Public Works, Schedule and Adoption of An ordinance occurring in the City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary Amendment for October 17th, 2018. Sheriff's Office, Approve Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Salem Kaiser School District for $165,265 to Provide a School Resource Officer through June 30th, 2019. Approve the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Chumawa Indian School for $356,374 to Provide a School Resource Officer through June 30th, 2019. And in the Tax Office, Approve an Order Advancing Tax Leverage to Small Taxing District pursuant to RS 311392.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
Oh, just one comment. Whenever this one for Chumawa comes through, the agreement with our sheriff's department to provide services there, how much better that's made it for the community and the kids themselves. This has been a good program. But it took a lot of agencies getting together, federal, state, and local, to make it happen. But I'm pleased with the results.
Yeah, you and I actually got to visit the youth court. Was that... Was it... Is that what they called it? Where the youth were...
Peer court, I think.
The peer court, yeah. Peer court, where they actually go before their peers and have consequences and are held accountable by their peers. And I know our sheriff's department is part of that and setting that up. And it's really a good program out there, so glad you brought that up. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of the consent agenda, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll move right into really exciting today. We're glad that you are here. Consider approval of proclamation designating October 14th through the 20th, 2018, as National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County. And Ann is here, and she brought some special guests with her. So Ann, if you would like to come up and present, and we'll have a discussion about this important issue. Welcome.
Thank you very much. And with me, as of course you know, this familiar champion for our cause and our movement, and there are young people that are here today. Pete Teller, counselor, Leslie Middle School. And there are peer helpers who are speaking today. I am gonna call them peer leaders. So Pete's gonna start with the kids, and then I'll... Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. We are so happy to be here this morning. Our students will speak just momentarily. They will introduce themselves and then share what's on their heart. But I would like to open with some comments of my own. The Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project intends to improve our world by building for the future, starting right now. Across the country, young people are speaking up like never before and leading the way in making our world a better place. The 21st Annual Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week gives us all a chance to start doing something right now to model the hand project's value of respect and equality in all relationships. We have nine student leaders with us this morning who are part of the Leslie Middle School Peer Helpers. These peer helpers are here as ambassadors for the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project and are going to share what is on their heart about how we can make the world a better place.
Fantastic. Thanks, Pete.
Hello, I'm Alena Farrison. I'm a part of the Peer Helper Program at Leslie Middle School. One of the many problems in the world I would like to solve is bullying. By bullying, I mean physical, verbal, social, and cyber bullying. In my opinion, bullying is just not okay at all, period. Bullying can lead to depression, self-harm, and suicide. I don't get it. Why pick on someone or harass them just because they look different or have different backgrounds? Everyone should be treated equally. Overall, everyone is unique and special in their own way. Hopefully, everyone can come together and solve this problem.
I'm Isabel Abula. I'm a seventh grade peer helper. Out of many problems in this world that I wanna fix is bullying. Bullying is a worldwide problem that I feel like should be more of a topic that is talked about. Bullying causes self-esteem problems and sometimes causes depression. By bullying, we are bringing each other down. In conclusion, I want bullying to be a subject that's more talked about.
Thank you. Welcome. Just introduce yourself.
My name's Carla Camacho. I'm an eighth grader, and I'm in the Peer Helper Program. A few of the problems in the world that I would like to solve are homophobia and racism. I chose these problems because they've been here for a while, and I think it's time we should solve them. But my main reason why I chose these problems are because people need to respect each other. And when we don't respect each other, we feel unwanted. So that can lead to self-harm, depression, and even suicide. People have the right to choose their own lifestyle, and we should respect that, even if we don't agree.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Vaeza, and I am an eighth grade peer helper. I am here because I believe that giving freedom to all immigrants, whether they are from Mexico, Canada, Europe, so on and so on, I believe that they should have the freedom that every other US citizens have. They shouldn't be worrying that one day they will be forced back to their homelands. It's sad that immigrants have to disguise themselves as US citizens or even use someone else's social security number just so they can work, provide for their families, be able to drive, et cetera. Immigrants should have the rights to do the things we do or we have as US citizens. They should be able to feel like they fit in and say who they really are without fearing that they will be caught. Therefore, my statement is to have freedom and equal rights for all. Thank you.
Thank you. You all act like you've done this many times before. You're professionals. Very good.
Hello, my name is Monica Quatra, and I'm an eighth grade peer helper. One of the problems I would like to solve is harassment and discrimination. If a person has a tattoo, that does not mean they're satanic. And if a boy likes pink, that does not mean they're gay. If a person is Muslim, that does not mean they're criminals or a danger to this country. It is good to be different. Love yourself and others.
Hi, I'm Peyton Bradley, and I'm an eighth grade peer helper at Leslie Middle School. And one problem out of many that I would like to be solved is everybody gets treated with equal respect. This problem needs to be solved because there are people out in this world that are like me. When I say people like me, I mean people who come from families with many different racial and political backgrounds, or people who have somebody with special needs or disability in their family. These groups of people sadly get talked poorly about or stared and laughed at in public. Even though people don't always mean to be mean, they are, and it hurts others. So please hear your part and think before you speak or act because you don't know who you are affecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Shanua Bauer, and I'm in the eighth grade, and I'm a part of the Leslie Peer Helper Program. One main problem in the world that I would like to change is the stereotyping of different people. The reason is because some people out in the world think a blonde girl is dumb just because of their hair color. Or because a girl cuts her hair short, it makes her a lesbian. Or even when a guy likes girl items and clothing, it makes him gay. Another unfortunate stereotyping is if a person is African-American or Hispanic, people automatically think they're incapable of common activities and are unequal in society. So with all the hate and judging in our world, it makes people think they're not good enough or smart enough, which can lead to things like people hiding the real them, depression, or even self-harm. So if a person can't be the real them, they sort of hide behind a mask, a mask that makes them the same as everyone else. But everyone, no matter the color of your skin or hair, no matter your size or shape, we have a right to express ourselves without judgment or stereotyping nipping at our ears.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Camacho. I'm in the seventh grade Peer Helper Program at Leslie Middle School. I would change lots and lots of things about this world, but since I only had one choice of changing anything about this world is being respectful to other cultures. Since people all over the world get to come here because they want to provide food and shelter for themselves or for their family, they come here to teach everyone what happens or what they do on a daily basis at their homes. So that is why I chose this topic, because either way, we all need to be respectful to one another. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Emily Torres, and I'm a seventh grade peer helper at Leslie Middle School. I believe that the world really needs to stop being so judgmental all the time. People have feelings, and it really hurts to hear something bad about yourself. It ruins your self-esteem. The world has to be kinder to one another because hate isn't going to get us anywhere. People just need to realize it. Even the small things count. Even if it's just in a friend way, it bothers you and it gets you thinking. Instead of criticizing, we should help one another and compliment one another.
Very good. Thank you.
Let me take a deep breath. This is the first time I've heard your voices. And what you've written from your heart is amazing. And we do count on you to make the change that we need in our families, in our schools, in our workplaces, in our places of worship, wherever people live, work, play, and pray together. This pledge that you're supporting in your school and in your community now is one way, a major way, we can all be united in one simple thing. Stop and think before anyone and everyone says or does anything that is hurtful to ourselves and others. Thank you, Pete, for your leadership all these years with the kids. I don't know how many kids you've personally reached out to. It's amazing. And I still hear from kids, from Pete's school and many of our schools here in Salem. South Salem High School student Lauren Studer wrote her story to tell what her activism created. Through her activism, she created suicide prevention awareness in a major way, saving lives. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you all in this community. Please take these 14 words to heart. That's one reason, there's a heart in the middle of the palm. We teach empathy with that heart. And the whole pledge is about self-control and accountability for our words and actions. Thank you for 21 years of allowing us to be here with the voices of change.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Pete, thank you very much, and for your leadership in your school as you're considered peer helpers. So you're helping educate other people to this pledge and what it means to them personally. And I want to thank you for challenging us in the county recently. And I've worn this since I got here, well, it would have been 2000, fall of 2014. I know this would be probably my fifth or fourth one of these where we've actually endorsed the pledge. And for those watching, this actually started here locally and now has gone international thanks to your leadership and just the concept and how other leaders around have taken this on. One of the things that happened here in Marion County just recently at our August all department head elected official meetings, Commissioner Carlson, Chair Carlson, who's not here today, challenged the leaders within the county, what are we doing to spread this message? And I think, I want to read some of the things that are happening in the county. And you know, here's some of the materials that... I know there's one over there on the diocese where you signed up for public hearing. Some of the materials are some in Spanish. The pledge is in Spanish. You can get it in Spanish. You can also get it in English. And so these are some of the materials that have been ordered by our staff throughout the county and are being put up. I put this one right in front of Commissioner's office.
That was kinda mean.
Yeah. He and I have a hard time when we talk to each other, sometimes reminding ourselves. But it really is a great pledge. And in our assessor's office, so I'm just gonna read a couple of these things so that you know what's happening. Besides talking about the campaign, it staff means the department is putting brochures and posters in the assessor's office and will hand out to customers at the counter. And we get a lot of customers coming into the assessor's office, especially this time of year as tax statements are going out. So it's perfect. The Board's office, we're distributing information about Board events and giving bracelets. And thank you, I know you gave me several bracelets, and I took them out to Jervis City Council. The mayor requested them, and I was out there. I went out there specifically to give the mayor and the council members their bracelets because we put it out in a newsletter. The Clerk's office is placing Spanish and English posters and brochures in the customer service area. A lot of people come into the Clerk's office to get passports and marriage licenses and all kinds of things. There's a lot of traffic in the Clerk's office. Community Services is promoting the campaign in an upcoming dog shelter anniversary celebration. And Finance Department is hanging posters in the office and has brochures available for staff. Health and Human Services, the WIC program, which is a very busy program. Prevention Early Childhood Programs will incorporate aspects of this campaign into their messaging. The Justice Court has English and Spanish posters put around the office, wristbands for staff and stickers to give out to customers. Justice Court is over on Portland Road and is open on Tuesday nights. And if one of our friendly sheriffs happens to give you a ticket, you can go in there in the evening and you'll be exposed to this pledge. Or there's other reasons you would go to the Justice Court. Juvenile Department, putting posters up and other supplies will be around the buildings for customers and for staff. Public Works will put up flyers and posters around their facilities. And the Sheriff's Office will do some promotion on social media, hand out promotional items at various community events throughout the year. So your challenge to us, besides Commissioners doing this every year, is making a difference within the 330,000 citizens that we represent and that we serve. So I wanted you to know that we are taking your challenge seriously this year. We always have, but actually some things are boots on the ground happening.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
And that's your quote in your email, right there. "Oh, my goodness, I am so touched by your message and support." Yeah? Thank you very much for all you've done. So...
It's not me. It's every single person that puts it into action. It's not one person. It really isn't. So thank you. And let's keep it going, because it takes time to create social change and repetition, repetition, repetition is how we know and learn everything. Thank you.
Oh, I'm thinking so many things and some previous subject that we still have to be careful about talking about. We do have some personnel issues. But it does relate to the very things you're talking about. So when these youngsters are talking, they get it. Adults have to get it too, and we'll all be better off. So let's hope the message expands to everybody.
One of the things that I learned a long time ago, I was taking a Dale Carnegie class, and these people around me were getting these awards, Most Inspirational, Most Improved. And I was looking around the room going, "How come I'm not getting any of these awards?" And I realized at that time, my role was to help other people be the best that they could be. And one of the things that evolved out of that was when you look at an individual, another unique human being, because we all are unique and we all are very special, created in the image of our Creator, is what's the number one on that person's forehead? How do you find what they have been created to do? And help them figure that out? And become their friend and become their peer and become their mentor in that? It's not always easy to do. It's not... I mean, we all make mistakes. I've said things, mean things to him. He's said mean things to me. But it's important to go back and acknowledge that you've made a mistake and that you want to get better. And that when you look at somebody, you can say, "Wait a minute. This person is unique and has special talents that I don't have." And how can I help them find those talents and be the best at what they can be and serve them in that way? And that makes a difference in the world. And hopefully, those people will get the rewards that they so deserve, whatever that is. So thank you for doing this, and I think we probably want to read...
I want to hear from Ann one more time. You've got something else to tell us. Give us a little advice before we let you leave.
Advice? Well, how can we reach every single family? Because this is... I started this in our schools here in Salem, K through 12. I knew that the kids are the bridge to the families and the community and the world as they reach out and grow, like what you said just now. Advice, keep it going and give every opportunity to not only take the pledge, but post the pledges. Purple paper, it doesn't cost much. Have your... All the county offices that have already responded to your request, actually take that pledge and put their hands on paper, sign their names. It is like a signed agreement, a contract, if we will. The word, the pledge starts with "I," "me," and "we," together. Join. Community is unity. So every family get this opportunity one way or another, but you have a huge outreach. And I'm already... Oh, my goodness. Can't believe what you've already done. So advice, encourage all of our schools, every single one of them in our district, public and private, to join Hands and Hearts and have their purple hands on a wall to remember the people that we've lost very most recently in our school district that you most likely know about. Remember that purple is to never forget those who have suffered and died at the hands of abuse and violence, including suicide and murder. So every home is a safe home. Get the word out, keep it going. Have those visual reminder, even if people don't know the pledge is attached to that. That's a simple unifying message that nobody could argue with. So encourage our schools to all participate. Faith community, everybody, so wherever you have influence, ask, "Do you know about this? Can you take it and put it into place wherever you are?" I'm a grandmother of six incredible grandkids. My dream was for all of my grandkids to have this in their school when they arrived. And you know what? That happened here in Salem. I got two little ones in California. I'm going down there this week, and I'm going into their elementary school and knocking on the door. If you're a grandparent listening, a parent listening, get it into whatever school, wherever, at whatever age level. It's for age three to 103. And yes, we do forget. You don't think I haven't broken this pledge? I have to remind myself every day, "I am smart enough." Didn't used to think so. I am good enough. Everybody needs to know that, to grow up knowing that they're valuable, irreplaceable human beings. And that's why we take this pledge. And that's why we take this pledge individually and with everyone that we know and love. Is that good?
That's good, thank you.
Great. And I think I've shared this in the past. I was in Indonesia one time and a young man asked, and I didn't have a Spanish bracelet. Do you have them in Spanish, the bracelets?
I don't, but if I had funding, I could sure make them.
Oh, and maybe we can do something about that. How much funding do you need for Spanish bracelets?
Oh my goodness.
But anyways, I remember in Indonesia, giving, a young man asked me about what it was and through an interpreter, I told him and gave him my bracelet. And then, last year in Belize, a gentleman from Honduras asked me about my bracelet. And he, I didn't have an interpreter, but through my Spanish, I call it my Spanglish. I know enough to ask questions. And I was telling him what it was and, you know, hands and hearts. So I gave him the bracelet too. That's when I came back and needed more bracelets. I've been giving them away when I travel. People ask me about them and I always have them. So, I, I don't...
The power of one person, what you're doing.
You never know.
Right there in Indonesia, Honduras. Oh wow.
We'll see. Okay.
Planting seeds.
All right. Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion that we do approve a proclamation that designates October 14th to 20th, 2018 as National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? I, I do, maybe it's after, after we read our motion, maybe I'll do this right now, but we have a motion, it's been seconded and the governor did a proclamation. And I think you've seen that. But I, I think I want to read, before we read our proclamation, is that we think it's appropriate to read what the governor did just recently. "The state of Oregon, along with Marion County, Yamhill County, Klamath County, and many school districts across Oregon are joining together to proclaim a commitment to ending abuse and violence in homes, schools, communities across the state. And whereas any form of mistreatment of another is abuse and all people have the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas the state of Oregon recognizes the respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships. And whereas anger is a feeling, abuse and/or violence is a choice, we acknowledge that each of us must come to understand that it is within our personal power to choose not to abuse or to use violence to resolve conflict. And whereas we, together with our communities around the country and overseas, recognize the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project pledge is effective tool and a key piece of the puzzle in abuse and violence prevention education. And whereas, let us join Hands and Hearts to unite a family, as a family, community, state, nation, world by pledging both privately and publicly. Quote, "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others," unquote. Now therefore, I, Kate Brown, Governor of the State of Oregon, proclaim October 14th through the 20th, 2018 to be Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Oregon and encourage all Oregonians, sorry, all Oregonians to join in this observance." Now we have ours.
Fine.
You want to start?
Did we vote? I just don't recall.
Oh no, we did not vote. We have a motion and a second and that was part of discussion. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we got that.
So, Chair Cameron, there's quite a bit of difference. Same, same basic theme certainly with what the governor wrote, but I would like that we do read this and if you allow me, I'll start now. "In the matter of proclaiming October 14th to 20th, 2018 to be National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week proclamation, whereas a community without abuse and violence is a dream we all share. And whereas any form of mistreatment of another is abuse and all people have the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas each of us must come to understand that it is within our personal power to choose not to use violence and abuse others to resolve conflict. And whereas we recognize that respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances. And whereas the principle of nonviolent resolution of conflict must be taught to our children and practiced within each of our families. And..."
"And whereas verbal and emotional abuse can be just as damaging as physical violence to a person's self-worth, creating scars that are carried for the rest of his or her life. And whereas verbal abuse such as name-calling, insulting, and belittling frequently escalates into simple force-like pushing, grabbing, and slapping and the worst scenario is to escalate into rage, serious violence, and even murder. And whereas we, the commissioners of Marion County, together with communities around the country and overseas, recognize Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project's Purple Hands pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. And now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of October 14th through the 20th, 2018 to be the 21st Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County and encourage all citizens of Marion County to join Hands and Hearts to unite as a family and a community to pledge both privately and publicly that, quote, "I will not use my hands or words, my words, for hurting myself or others," unquote, dated this 10th day of October, 2018."
Thank you.
So, did you think you were done?
I'm gonna sign it.
Go ahead, but aren't you gonna ask Ann or Pete or one of the kids to lead us in the pledge?
Well, we, we are, but I want to sign it first and then I want to take the pledge.
Fine.
And I'm gonna sign several copies so we can give them one, right? All right. Who would like to lead us in the pledge today?
Absolutely, kids. Young ladies, please stand.
You want to hold it? Sure. And we're actually going to do it first in Spanish, then in English. Here we can read it. So repeat after us, go ahead. Try. Sorry. Miss manos o palabras. Palasima. Otros omimos. Now in English. Okay.
I will not.
I will not.
Use my hands.
Use my hands.
Or my words.
Or my words.
For hurting myself or others.
For hurting myself or others. All right, very good.
Loved.
You want to do it right?
We'll go get, come...
Jolene, where would you like us? You want us down front with them? Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna have to...
Couple rows here.
Yeah.
There we go. We won't be able to fit in.
So, why don't you go ahead and go in the back and let's bring a couple more.
Well, they're too big.
Come down in front. There we go. Yeah, we need a couple rows here to fit everyone in. So we're gonna do two here, so.
No, no, that's okay. A commissioner, okay, can you, can maybe switch places?
Yeah, just turn. Just turn. This is the middle, just turn like that. There you go. And then you squeeze in.
Yeah, please go down, we'll break in. There's a nice spot there.
Be like me.
So I'm gonna do this one and then one with my camera. So everybody ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna do just a couple. In case someone's blinking. All right. All right, is everybody ready? One, two, three. I'm gonna do one more.
See you patiently waiting back there.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I was gonna say something, Ann, before, I know that we're done, but we had, KGW was here and was asking some questions about the other issue that was, was up front and I, I suggested that they stay and film this. They didn't. But that's the type of thing, you know, the media, if we can get the media to try to write about this and talk about this and the good things that are happening, it won't be the headlines on the, on the news tonight. But it was an opportunity and didn't happen. But, we'll get there. Yeah.
Yeah, it is good news.
It is good news. Thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next item for action today is under Business Services. Consider the recommendations of the Marion County Health Insurance Plans for Plan Year And Justine, oh, we've got the whole crew here today, just from... Yeah, Business Services and Counsel. Great.
Well, good morning. I'm Justine Flora with Business Services, Risk Management, and Benefits. And I'm here to talk to you today about the upcoming health plan year 2019 for the Benefits Department.
Colleen Coon Chafin's Business Services Director.
Noah Olson, Assistant Legal Counsel.
All right. So not to, not to scare you with so many of us up here today, this was a tough act to follow and it dawned on me as I came into the room and saw the group here, that it seems like every year when I come to talk to you about benefits, it's the same day as this group. So, it always starts things off nicely, so that was...
Are we trying to tell her to be nice to us? Is that what the message is? I think so.
No, I think it's the other way around.
It's nice that it's all fresh in our minds. But benefits is always a very positive thing though. The county, I think, does a very good job at providing a very rich benefit package to help protect the employees and their families who work with Marion County to make sure that their healthcare needs are and other needs. We have, in addition to what I will talk to you about today, but we have life insurance and disability plans, not to mention vacations and those other benefit packages that we have. But what I'm here to talk to you today is about the renewals for our healthcare benefits. And they're up for renewal every, every year with effective dates of January 1. So we're getting ready to kick off our open enrollment period, which is the time when folks can elect to stay with the current program they're on or they can change to another plan or add or drop dependents, all that kind of stuff. So what, what I typically come to talk to you about is the recommendations that are made by our Health Insurance Study Committee. Each year, this group gets together and reviews the, the plans, the design, and sometimes considers recommending changing carriers as well. This year, we actually had two committees, so we added a committee, also Health Insurance Study Committee, but this is a separate committee for the MCLAA, our Law Enforcement Bargaining Unit, because their plan is just a little bit different than the, the larger group that allows them to also make recommendations about their program. So this year, as we first received our renewal offers from the carriers, a couple of things really stood out. One was the carrier who we use for both our Preferred Provider Organization, or PPO, plans. We have one from the MCLA group and then a separate one for the, everyone else, we call them non-MCLA. And then they also, for the non-MCLA group, they also offer a high deductible health plan or an HGHP. And alongside of that, the, the county does offer a health savings account that folks can participate in. You're eligible for that if you're on a high deductible health plan. And then we also offer, through Kaiser, we have an HMO plan for both groups. And we also offer an HMO dental plan through Kaiser and more of a PPO dental plan through Moda or Delta Dental. The Regents Program came in with a fairly high renewal increase this year. So that was a little bit challenging because while we continue to offer very rich benefits, we want to make sure that they're affordable to the employees because they do share in the cost of, of the healthcare programs. And the other thing that the Regents' renewal came with was some dynamics within the organization. Mid-year this year, they did lose the PPO contract for a large provider group in the area. And we received a letter from them saying there was a very tenuous relationship with them in the Salem Hospital, which is the primary healthcare facility. If somebody, Marion County employee needs to use hospital services, they're most likely to use Salem Hospital. So that was a little challenging. So we did go out and get quotes from alternative carriers for both the PPO plans and for the high deductible health plan. The larger, or the non-MCLA HISK group did make some recommendations to change from the Regents' programs to Pacific Source, which is another carrier. We asked them to match the same benefit design and they were able to do that very, very closely. We have a couple little enhancements, actually. One is the addition of a telemedicine component and with a considerably smaller cost as well. So for example, the, excuse me, Regents came in with a 9.8% increase to their premium. Pacific Source would only increase our premium this year by 4.8. So that, that's a savings with a very strong network. So we did a disruption report and found that there was really very little difference in the strength of the network with that large provider, provider office, as well as a very strong relationship with Salem Hospital. So that was very positive and the committee did ask me to recommend that we change from Regents to Pacific Source for both the PPO and the high deductible health plan, that we remain with Kaiser, who actually came in with a reduction of 5% in their health, their PPO health, or their, sorry, HMO health plan premium. And also renew with the Kaiser HMO dental plan, as quoted, which was a flat, and also the Delta Dental Program, which came in with a flat renewal, but they also offered to pull preventive services out of the annual maximum, which actually helps give folks a little more money to spend on the work they might need as a result of having, well, not the result of the exam, but might be identified a need for during the exam, which we really do want to encourage folks to have their preventive dental work done. So that, that does help our cause there. So that is the recommendation from the non-MCLA HISK. In addition, I would also like to request that the commissioners include or continue to contribute to the health savings account for those who participate in the high deductible health plan, which you've done each year, which does help those folks with the high deductible health plan. And then we also have another smaller standalone program for folks who may be eligible for benefits based on their hours, who would otherwise not be eligible for, for benefits.
So do we want to, we're talking first here about the, the MC, not the law enforcement, not...
Right, the non-MCLA. I have a separate recommendation for the...
Two separate motions. Because I heard you had MCLA in there. So, questions, Commissioner?
Well, one that I don't, should have asked earlier, we've had pretty considerable long and in-depth discussions on this. Personally, Regency's been fine with me and I'm sorry to hear that didn't work out. But, you just commented that this, and I'm sorry, Pacific Source has good relationships with Salem Hospital, but I don't remember asking about other area hospitals, Saniam and Staton and Silverton. Do you have any idea if that's a same or good relationship?
I would have to double check, but I believe so.
Okay.
What I'll say about the Salem Hospital in particular, when we went out to bed, we, we told all of the carriers to, we, it was required that they do have a good, strong local network. to request that the commissioners include or continue to contribute to the health savings account for those who participate in the high deductible health plan, which you've done each year, which does help those folks with the high deductible health plan. And then we also have another smaller standalone program for folks who may be eligible for benefits based on their hours, who would otherwise not be eligible for benefits.
So do we want to, we're talking first here about the MC, not the law enforcement.
Right, the non-MCLA. I have a separate recommendation for the MCLA group.
Two separate motions, because I heard you had MCLA in there. So, questions, Commissioner?
Well, one that I don't, should have asked earlier, we've had pretty considerable, long, in-depth discussions on this. Personally, Regents has been fine with me, and I'm sorry to hear that didn't work out. But you just commented that this, I'm sorry, Pacific Source has good relationships with Salem Hospital, but I don't remember asking about other area hospitals, San Em, and Stateon and Silverton. Do you have any idea if that's a same or good relationship?
I would have to double check, but I believe so.
Okay.
What I'll say about the Salem Hospital in particular, when we went out to bed, we told all of the carriers to, it was required that they do have a good, strong local network. The, they did share with us that they have a very good relationship, and it's an evergreen contract with Salem Hospital. So there's not a renewal date on it. So we won't be saying in one year that, oh, wait a minute, we need to renegotiate this. And it does create considerable disruption to the members, especially when sometimes these contracts aren't necessarily calendar year contracts, which is what we experienced in July with the large provider network.
And just to maybe explain to the public, but suddenly you could even, for example, at Salem, their agreement falls through. So you're suddenly out of network and facing more personal costs and kind of starting over even.
Correct, because the benefits are paid at a different level. So they're paid at a different percentage to the hospital, but also we don't enjoy those network negotiated rates as well.
Okay.
Just a question on the HSA contribution. It's 625 for individual and 1,300 for family. Is there a reason it's not exactly half on the 625? Should be 6, not 650?
There have been years when it has happened to be half. That's, I think, very, very generous for an employer to do a full half of that. Last year, and I believe the year before, it stayed static, and we didn't increase it, which it definitely is the prerogative of the commissioners, if you would like to increase it to equal half of the deductible.
I just, I couldn't remember, because it, never mind. I mean, it just, I thought it was always half of what the family contribution was, but never mind, it's no big deal.
It's pretty close.
What was my other question? I had one other one. Oh, I'll come and think of it. Oh, I know. Colleen or Noah, did you have anything to add?
I'm gonna let her take care of the non-MCLA. Noah and I are here to address the MCLA.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner?
No. So Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do accept the renewal recommendations presented, and I'll just read them. Accept non-MCLA HISK recommendations, change PPO Preferred Provider Organization and High Deductible Health Plan to Pacific Source, as quoted. Renew Kaiser HMO Medical Plan, as quoted. Renew Kaiser Dental Plan, as quoted. And renew Delta Dental Plan, as quoted. Accept the health savings arrangement. You get bigger print than I do. I've got to get to the bottom of this.
That's because I wear glasses.
Oh, I could do that, to excuse me. Employer contribution recommendation and continue HSA contribution of $625 of individual and $1,300 family. That's the motion.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's done. And we're gonna go on to consider recommendations to the Marion County Law Enforcement Association Health Insurance Plans for Year 2019.
Okay. So hello again. I'm Justine Flora, here to talk about the non-MCLA HISK recommendations. And this group works a little bit differently in that...
Oh, nice, thank you.
Oh, did I say that? I'm sorry. The MCLA renewals. That HISK Committee actually makes their recommendations to the Business Services Director, who is Colleen Coon-Chafin's. And they are a little bit different. The renewal rates came in at the same levels. So while the plan is different, the cost is a little bit different, the increases were the same. So we can really mimic everything we just talked about, with the exception of the recommendation that the MCLA group did made. So I will hand this over to Colleen.
Thank you, Justine. Colleen Coon-Chafin's Business Services Director. I brought Noah here in case you had questions, and so he's really here to address any questions we might have from a legal perspective. So Justine spoke about the non-MCLA Health Insurance Committee, and I want to just talk to you about the MCLA HISK team's recommendation to me, and that was that they wanted to stay with Regents. They wanted to stay with Regents simply because Regents was listed in their contract. It was written into the contract, even against my recommendations at the time when it was put into the contract. MCLA gave me their recommendation, and I cannot, in good faith, recommend their choice. It is potentially detrimental to its 96 members currently enrolled on the Regents' plan. Our primary concern, as Justine mentioned, is the tenuous relationship that Regents has with Salem Health. As you're aware, last summer, Regents lost the contract with Salem Health Physicians Group, so they are already out of network, which means if a member had a doctor in the plan and they are no longer in the network, there are higher costs to the member, unless they switch doctors, which they can. Salem Health Physicians is comprised primarily of specialists and hospitalists, and if you need to know what those are, Justine can talk to you about those. Basically, doctors who work out of the hospital. It's not impossible to do, but you will likely have increased cost. That said, in a hospital or emergency situation, being out of network at the hospital has huge consequences to the member. And in emergency, any treatment at Salem Health would be out of network. Members would have to shuttle or be shuttled, additional cost, to Portland or Eugene for their care. An example, a member recently had an appendectomy. That surgery was in emergency. With the member in-network costs were approximately $18,000. The member ended up paying over $3,100 out of pocket. Out-of-network costs to the member would have been over $7,500 higher. I would shudder to think what a broken arm, heart surgery, newborn baby without complications, or God forbid, a gunshot wound would cost out of network. We have met with the association and recommended that they would too accept Pacific Source as the plan, which is very similar to the Regents' plan. Going forward, we'll need to deal with this issue in upcoming negotiations, and Noah can talk about that if you have questions about that. As Justine mentioned, Regents came in with an increase of 9.8, and Pacific Source with an increase of 4.8. This issue is less about the increase in costs and more about the ramifications of Regents not being in the network and the increased costs to the members. My obligation to the county is not just for these 96 members, but for the county at large, and I'm concerned about the ramifications of having to pull these people out of this plan, and the board having to go with more than two carriers, as you are the recommendation. You provide that authority to have two carriers, and that would make us have to go to three, which I believe you would not recommend. But I would not recommend that either, for, just for the simplicity of how we've gone through these. We did go out for the RQ or P just about trying to make sure how we got alternate providers here to see where we could go. And if you have questions, we're happy to answer them, and Noah can answer any questions you might have about the bargaining side.
Oh, I really don't. We have discussed this. I get it. Off the subject, I can see where we probably never want to have one company listed on a contract.
Agreed.
Because it takes away the ability, really, to negotiate. You're a captive audience. I wonder if therefore why the rate increased, but just so you know. No, I don't have any questions.
I just, when I looked at this, in fact, I think I said this in our work session, this would cost me more, potentially a lot more, if we went with this recommendation. I'm still, I don't want to say confused, I'm still, I guess perplexed that others didn't see that as well and recommend a different program. So I appreciate you bringing this other recommendation forward, Colleen, and I'll be supportive of that, so.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, Chair Cameron, I would make a motion to approve the recommendation. Again, I'll read it a little bit longer than this, and now that you've adjusted my print, I could, no, let's just pretend.
Sometimes I can do technical stuff.
I appreciate this. Anyway, the motion is to approve the recommendation, which rejects the, yes, reject the MCLA HISK recommendation, renew Regents' PPO health plan, and change PPO carrier to Pacific Source, and accept all other MCLA HISK recommendations. Renew Kaiser HMO health plan with minimal mandatory plan changes. Renew Kaiser Dental with minimal mandatory plan changes, and renew Delta Dental Plan with minimal mandatory plan changes, and plan changes to exclude preventative care from the annual plan maximum.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
And that completes our business of the day. I know you wanted to share a little bit about, oh, I guess, yeah, let me read the calendar while you're doing those, signing those things. So today, Wednesday, oh, this is gonna be a fun day. In fact, I've got my Shampooey 175th Anniversary pen on, again, 175th Anniversary of the signing of the agreement there. We're gonna be up at the Butteville Landing Ribbon Cutting, which is very close to Shampooey Park. And that is at 3 o'clock today, Butteville Landing, Butteville Road in Butteville. Let me say that again. Butteville Landing Ribbon Cutting in Butteville Landing at Butteville Road in Butteville. Isn't that cool?
Yeah.
In Oregon, yeah. All right. And then Monday, 8:30, calendar review here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Monday, the 15th, at 9:00 a.m., management update, Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 16th, at 9:00 a.m., work session on drug and alcohol policy, Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 16th, again, at 10:00 a.m., work session on travel Salem. Jurism Promotion Area Initiative here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. Tuesday, again, on the 16th, 11:30 a.m., Marion County Reentry Initiative Planning Meeting, Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. And then Wednesday, the 17th, back here at 9 o'clock for our weekly board session. Now, I'd share a little bit about last night, a productive, I thought, very good night. You wanna talk about that?
I do. Just to lay it out a little bit, the community forum was held at Chomecada for East Salem, and I wasn't really, you, Commissioner Cameron, Commissioner Carlson, were set it up in conjunction with Public Safety Committee, this meeting out there, and then had the town hall. So I kind of had to invite myself along, and I'm sorry if I feel that way. I didn't have a lot to contribute, I admit that, but I very much wanted to be there, because I wanted to see how people were reacting to actions that we've taken in the last year. And I may read this wrong, but the big things that we've done is to expand police protection through the Sheriff's Department. We saw the huge need. How do we get more services into the area? And came up with the idea of contracting essentially with the district to be able to provide what will be 10 deputies. The other big one was to expand street lighting. I'm not telling you anything, but it's been done since a certain date. Developers had to include streetlights afterwards. They've been put in by the county as we get petitioned from local residents that they need them. So you've got very, very incomplete areas, and driving away from it last night, you could look down the streets, the 45th and whatever, and see just how dark they were. So all these problems had to do with public safety. The lighting is certainly a big part of it. Here's my bottom line, I'm talking too much. I really felt great support by the people that were there of, actually, they were asking for what we've already done.
Started, yeah, we've initiated it, right.
So we're ahead, and we're responsive, and I really feel good about it. And there's some vulnerability. We take some chances, you know. They just turn on you and say, oh, we don't want that, we don't want to pay for that. But I never heard any of that last night. That's all.
Yeah, I, it was, I thought, very well organized. I want to give Commissioner Carlson and HP, obviously, credit, you know, the way they detailed it out. And I want to thank all our departments, the Sheriff's Department, Public Works, mainly Public Works and the Sheriff's Department, because that's what it is. It's, you know, the engineering, the enforcement, and the education is public safety issues. And the sheriff, we've been working, we were working on that Public Safety Service District for three years, trying to get that done, and then to have that supported. And then all the community meetings we had, and you could tell a lot of those people had been to those meetings and rallied the support. But I wrote down, and I shared this last night, and if anybody's watching, there's 40,000 people living in that unincorporated area, and if it was incorporated into a city, it would be the second largest city in Marion County, larger than Kaiser. And I think, I don't know that a lot of people knew that before they came to that meeting last night. And what, the other thing that I really appreciated, Commissioner, was the passion from a couple individuals who are really trying to bring neighborhood associations together and rally those people together. But it was good, it was good to be able to educate people on what we had already done, and it was exactly what they were asking for, but they didn't really know where we're at. And so one of the things I walked away with in that was the ability that we need to continue to communicate, kind of like we've done up at the Little North Fork, where we went up there and started doing all these projects, and we got the people together twice a year and shared with them what we worked on, got some more input. I think we should do that in East Salem, and just continue to help them make their community a livable place. Part of our strategic plan for our economic development is to have a place of livability.
And we've made big gains, and we can do the same thing in East Salem. The other thing I probably took, no, this is wrong to say it this way, but it raised my eyebrows a little, was a statement that only through associations could they get the counties and our attention to be able to make changes.
Well, I remember who said that, but it helps.
It certainly can be effective, and, you know, we would welcome it. But the individual, we have to know what the problems are to be able to address them. So I hope, one lady said different, but I hope, if anything, we made ourselves available, is our key, key, I don't know the right word, character.
Yeah. I think we're all on the same page over there. Another thing that happened last week was Jane's awful quiet over there today.
Did she do something?
No, yeah, she, she and I had a long, was that Thursday night? She and I had another long day, like last night. We had that last Thursday. I don't know, my days are blending together, because it doesn't seem like I get home before 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock. You know, people ask me, is this a full-time job? And I go, I wish it was only full-time, right? And Jane drives down, you know, and then she shows up at the Aurora Planning and Joint Council Meeting. And we've got some work to do to come back and answer some of their questions about what we can share, what we want to share in our intergovernmental agreement with them. And they're gonna ask for things that they want us to be able to share up there. You know, it's a, it's a community that is concerned about their future, and yet there's others that have no jurisdiction, that want to have jurisdiction up there. And so we've got some challenges to work on with that, and I'm excited.
You just gave me a great idea. Why don't we tell Clackamas County Board just to take over? We really could just go home. They'll do a nice job.
Oh, okay. So I, I mean, that's the fun stuff of our job, right? So, yeah, it's interesting. What else happened this week?
You had a granddaughter, right? Grandson.
Grandson, yeah. Grandson was born Friday.
The same day, not trying to steal your time.
Yours was born on Thursday, wasn't it?
Well, it was Thursday. I don't know that. It was Friday morning.
Mine was Friday, like at 3:00 in the afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, so whatever day that is, October, was it the 3rd? No. 5th, October 5th.
Yeah, I'll never remember again anyway.
Right, right. Somebody has to remind me. So another college savings account that I get to start for my grandson. Yeah, we did. So that's my third grandson, and yours is, what, how many you got?
Six, I believe.
Six, you gotta keep track.
No, but I have five kids.
You better start catching some more fish. You gotta feed all these kids.
I can keep count of those. You know, I have five kids. I expect a little more production. There's just no doubt about it. But they, this was two, I had one in Boston about 10 days ago, and then one here at Stateon. So that's pretty good, starting to catch up.
Well, I'm gonna get to spend the next few days with my three-year-old grandson and his first plane ride and first trip to D-land. That's gonna be pretty cool, so.
I don't know why I want to tell you this story, but I do, because I know you like duck hunting. And I have a, I have a five, six-year-old grandson, and I brought up, would James be old enough to go duck hunting with me? And they don't think he'd like that. So, gosh, I gotta find that one that wants to go.
Have you got a little BB gun or something that you can?
I don't think...
He's not that one.
Well, he's the one that wanted to know, this is a true story, I'm not laying it out enough, that, he says, "Grampy, we don't kill fish if they talk, do we?" And I told him, "No, if they talk, it's right back." And I told him, "No, if they talk, it's right back." So, anyway, if you'd like to have somebody to go.
Oh, yeah, that someday, that'll be fun. I know my three-year-old likes to, he loves to go out in the boat, up at the lake. He loves to swim. I mean, I got to get him swimming lessons because he'll be on the side of the pool and just jump in, you know, and you got to be there to catch him. And he'll go underwater and come up laughing and stuff. So he loves the water, and I think he will be, and his dad is, his dad is an avid fisherman. He probably, if he could make a living at it, he'd do it all the time. But, so I think he'll be...
You're outdoors guy.
He'll be in the boat. He'll be in, he'll be in the duck.
He might be having a relative mad at me right now, so.
Okay, so we had a good board session today, and we will go ahead and adjourn.